Good morning and welcome to Pittsburgh Regular Meeting of City Council for Tuesday, April 20th, 2021. Council will continue to meet virtually until further notice. All meetings will be cable cast on the city's channel and live stream on the city channels, Pittsburgh YouTube channel. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Kraus.
Here.
Mr. Laval.
Here.
Mr. O'Connor.
Here.
Ms. Strasburger.
Here.
Mr. Wilson. Mrs. Cal Smith. Reverend Burgess, President present.
Here.
Eight members present.
Thank you very much. From our remote locations, you may put your hand on your heart or either look or think about the flag as I recite for all of us, the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. And given this moment of time where we're waiting, an important trial, the results of trial in Minnesota, as our country is now coming to grips with its original sin out of racism and that we are across the country, learning to do things to make ourselves more equitable, shall we in this moment of prayer pray for unity and a country where every person is, as King said, judged by the content of the character and not by the color of their skin? Can we have a moment of silence for those of you who do not pray and for those of us Okay, thank you very much. The next order of business is proclamation and on behalf of Council President Smith, we have one important, extraordinarily important proclamation to be presented this morning. Madam Clerk.
Do you want it read in its entirety?
I can't, I don't see it. You tell me, you, I'll take your judgment, Kim.
Okay. It's not that long, I can, I can read it in its entirety.
Okay.
Okay. Council President Cal Smith presents, whereas May 21st, 2021 has been designated as the 23rd Annual Take a Father to School Day in the City of Pittsburgh Public Schools. And whereas since its inception in 1999 by founder Mark Brently Senior, the goal of the event is to bring fathers and male role models into the school space in order to establish better communications with schools and explore opportunities for volunteering and engaging men to take an active proactive role in their child's education. However, due to COVID-19, this year's event will be held virtually. And whereas during Take a Father to School Day, fathers and father figures from across the city of Pittsburgh, virtually visit the schools of their children, meet teachers and staff, and participate in organized fun activities. And whereas it is important to include positive male, make role models in the definition of father for the purpose of highlighting the inclusive nature of this event. And whereas this year, virtual events are planned where online activities are available for fathers, father role models and families to have fun with their students. And whereas Pittsburgh Public Schools would like to acknowledge this year's partners, the Carnegie Library of Pittsburgh, Literacy Pittsburgh, Pittsburgh Penguins, Pittsburgh Pirates and the Pittsburgh Steelers, as well as local men's groups and a variety of organizations that have continued to support the success of the initiative. And now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize and honor the important work of this program and the volunteers and participants who continuously commit themselves to the education and development of our city's children. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare May 21st, 2021 to be Take a Father to School Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
Need a motion?
Send move.
You second?
Second.
All those in favor, send five by saying aye.
Aye.
Those whose name, resolution has passed. We have joined with us a number of guests, starting with Larry Meadows, who is the manager of this program and representative from Pittsburgh Public Schools, who has brought with him a number of guest speakers. And so Larry, if you do not mind, if you would now introduce your guest to us.
Thank you Reverend Burgess and good morning, everyone. Appreciate City Council for recognizing Take a Father School Day 2021. Our first speaker will be Mark Brently Senior, who is the founder of Take a Father to School
Good morning, City Council, not sure if you can hear me or see me.
We can hear you.
Excellent. First of all, let me say thank you so much for the partnership that we've had with the councils for many, many years on this wonderful, wonderful program. We are very excited to kick off the 23rd Annual Take a Father to School Day. But more importantly, I think that we need to really buckle down this year. The COVID-19 has thrown a curve to everybody. And so we have to be creative in ways of getting to our students. And we're excited that we're going to be doing some different things this year around the importance of the resilience of reading, encouraging folks to read, get a book, read to a child, point out the words, pronounce them out loud. We have to do these things because reading, of course, is the key to education.
Mr. Mark, you muted yourself.
You're muted, Mark, can't hear you.
Especially the staff administration at the Pittsburgh Public Schools for their many, many years of support under the leadership, under the leadership of Dr. Anthony Hamlet. And then we're also extremely excited about the fact that each year, we're able to pick up more and more supporters in terms of sponsorships. So we're happy and we're excited about that. And we're thankful once again that council will be partnering with us and promoting it. And hopefully, we may see some of you council members out on the trail over the summer, reading to some of our students. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Brently. Thank you for your service over all these years. Next up, we have Superintendent of Pittsburgh Public Schools, Dr. Anthony Hamlet.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Pittsburgh City Council, for allowing us to be here today. Also, thank you for making this event to celebrate fathers' annual declaration across this city. Twenty-three years ago, former school board member Mark Brently Senior set out to increase the active participation of fathers and men in Pittsburgh Public Schools. It has been my esteemed privilege and honor to watch the seed Mr. Brently planted blossom into an active thriving initiative, so engaging that other districts across the country have adopted Take a Father to School Day. I know personally how important it is for a student to look up and see their father, grandfather, uncle, brother, pastor, or positive male role model standing next to them, encouraging them in the classroom. While we would love for dads to celebrate in person, our schools will be celebrating this year's events virtually to ensure everyone's safety. I want to thank this year's partners, Carnegie Library of Pittsburgh, Literacy Pittsburgh, Pittsburgh Penguins, Pittsburgh Pirates and the Pittsburgh Steelers for your support in Take a Father to School Day. Again, thank you, we appreciate the support and the work.
Thank you, Dr. Hamlet. Next up for the Pittsburgh Penguins, we have Trevor Daley.
Thank you so much for having me. This is, this is amazing what you guys are doing. Reverend, thank you so much for the prayer to start, that was, that was great, great way to start it off. I think I'm here just to talk about, you know, being a dad. I have a nine-year-old daughter, I have a 12-year-old son, and you know, my, my biggest influence on them being a role model and, you know, being a hockey player, as long as I've been one, is was just to teach them work ethic, you know, to work hard, to follow your dreams. You know, I was always somebody that my mom always told me to, to make sure you dream big and follow your dreams and work hard and who knows what could happen. And as a father now, teaching them, I don't, I don't go far off from what I was taught by, by my mom. She taught me, you know, be a good boy, use your manners, work hard, treat people the way you want to be treated. And that's kind of the message that I try to, try to instill in my kids. And it's the same message when, you know, hopefully, we could get back to normal here and not have to do this on, on webcam anymore. We could say this in person, but that's what I would, my message to, to all the kids, you know, when I do get to go in schools, that's, that's my message to them. And, and I think that's so important. And, you know, we are in tough times right now with, with everything we're going through, with everybody is going through, not just, you know, what we see on TV in, in Minnesota, but, you know, this whole COVID thing. So stay positive, it's, you know, things are going to get better, we're, we're, we're pretty, I feel my heart that we're, we're going to have many good days down the road here. So I'll leave it with that and thank you guys so much for having.
Thank you, Mr. Daley. Next up for Carnegie Library of Pittsburgh, we have Dan Hensley.
Thank you, Larry. Council, thank you for having us. Good morning, everyone. My name's Dan Hensley and I am a librarian at Carnegie Library of Pittsburgh. I'm also a proud parent of a fourth grader at PPS Liberty. So as a dad and a librarian, I get the opportunity to experience the joy of being a part of kids' lives every day. We do have good research that tells us that dads and other males play an important role in literacy development, but that doesn't mean it can also be fun. So just want to remind everybody, whether, whether you're putting on an audio book in the car, playing word games while you wait for the bus, or just chatting while you toss the ball, you can give yourself a pat on the back knowing that while you're having fun, you're also setting up the special kids in your life for a healthy future. Carnegie Library of Pittsburgh is proud to partner with Pittsburgh Public Schools and all of the strong positive role models in the PPS community in this shared effort to create resilience through reading. And in this year of extraordinary challenges and the equally extraordinary resilience that our community has shown, we'll be providing a pre-recorded read aloud for K-5 students and we'll also be continuing our online library card signup for students and families. We're also very excited to be able to offer custom librarian curated recommended read alouds for fathers and any other special adult who would like to be a guest reader so we can help you pick that perfect book for the special day. And you can access that at carnegielibrary.org/match. And finally, we'd also like to thank Pittsburgh Public Schools for continuing to partner with us and with the City of Pittsburgh in the Leaders Library Card Challenge as we work together to get every student in Pittsburgh Public Schools a library card and empower them to use it to its full potential so that they can grow in literacy and learning. So I'll just wrap by saying to all, to all you other dads and caring adults out there, let's keep at it and make sure that our kids feel loved and supported and set up to succeed. So thank you.
Thank you, Dan, that was great. Next up for the Pittsburgh Pirates, we have Derek Shelton.
Hey, y'all, just before Derek Shelton goes on, this is Joel Gray, Manager of Community Outreach. Just wanted to say on behalf of the Pittsburgh Pirates, we are really excited and hats off to this continued effort of Take Your Father to School Day. And I'm standing in support of my brother Derek Shelton, who I'm going to pass it over to now to speak about being a father.
Morning and thank you to the City Council and thank you Joel for that introduction. Very excited to be here. Take Your Father to, to School Day is kind of special for me, my father was a teacher. So I was in school with him a lot. He was actually the dean of students when I was in school. So it will keep you on the straight and narrow when your father is doing all the discipline in a school for my brother and I. But I think one of the things that I wanted to hit on is I have a 20, 17 and 11-year-old children, boy, girl, girl. And something that really stood out at the beginning was the mentorship and role model aspect of that. And I think it's extremely important for, for all of us as, as parents and as fathers to do that, especially in the world we're living in today. I think the greatest gift that we can, we can give to the world is making sure that our children make it a better place. And that's where I really feel the importance of fatherhood is. And whether that's in the classroom, whether that's on, you know, the hockey arena, the baseball field, the football field, that's where we can provide. As long as we're giving love and support, that's extremely important. So I would like to thank you very much for having me. Continue to, to love your kids, whether, you know, with mine right now because they're in Florida, it's through Zoom, or if you're in person. But like I said before, I think the gift that we give is making sure that our children understand it and make sure the world needs to move forward and become a better place. Have a blessed day.
Thank you, Mr. Shelton. Next up from Literacy Pittsburgh, we have Maria Polinsky.
Great, thanks Larry. Thanks so much to City Council and Pittsburgh Public Schools for the chance to be here today. Literacy Pittsburgh is excited to be a sponsor of this year's Take a Father to School Day. I think this is our third year being involved and it's been, it's interesting to have virtual this year. So definitely the definition of resilience. Parents and caregivers are a child's first and best teacher. They set the stage for learning throughout a child's life. Literacy Pittsburgh is committed to ensuring that the adults surrounding our children are prepared for this role. For nearly 40 years, we have helped adults and families create better lives for learning. We give people who experienced life and learning challenges a second chance. Our students and their families embody resilience. At Literacy Pittsburgh, we help people improve their reading, writing and math skills, allowing them to get a better job, earn a GED credential, go into college or enter trade school. About half of our students are immigrants and refugees who are eager to learn English and American culture so they could put down roots and contribute to their new home. Our students, through their example, convey to their children that education is important. They are better able to help their children with homework, communicate with teachers. They really instill a love of reading and learning that will influence the child's achievement in school and throughout their lives. We also help our students create a secure and stable future for their families. The educational foundation our students gain allow them to pursue job training and careers that will be in better wages, more time at home with their children and more food on the table. Literacy Pittsburgh is honored to stand with the fathers and father figures who are committed to making sure our children get the best possible start in life. Thank you for living our mission of better lives through learning.
Thank you, Maria. Such inspirational messages today, loving it. And last, but definitely not least, from the Pittsburgh Steelers, we have Brandon Hunt.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Brandon Hunt, I'm the Pro Scouting Coordinator for the Pittsburgh Steelers, as well as have the privilege to be a son and a father of two, five and eight-year-old boys. I'm excited that we are taking, we are partnering with the Pittsburgh Public Schools for the Take the Father to School Day program. It is imperative as men that we all take an active part in education and the development of our youth to ensure the success now and in the future. As families and entire communities continue to recover from this pandemic that we're all going through, programs like this are important to continue so our kids, to continue now, so that our kids know that we continue to support them. As a father and as a son, I know it's important for our youth to have mentors, fathers and father figures to look up to. And we at the Pittsburgh Steelers look forward to supporting this initiative now and for many years to come. Thank you for this blessed opportunity to be a part of this and look forward to actually being hands-on with a bunch of you in the future. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt. And with that, we yield back our time.
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, I didn't know if you were still taking, still doing the meeting.
Now, I'm turning it over to you. Is that, is that the end of their presentation, Brenda?
Yes.
So I'm sorry, I saw you come in, so I'm deferring to you. We are at the second proclamation, which is the, to be read in record, which is the fear, we have, I guess, two to be read in record. You want to take over now or do we go through the proclamations? Your choice.
Go through the proclamations then, aye.
Okay, so, all right, so second of all, we have two proclamations to be read in the record. Kim, will you do that for me?
Sure. Okay, I'm going to do Councilwoman Gross, since she's requesting that this proclamation be read in its entirety. Councilwoman Gross presents, whereas April 11th, 2021 marks the 53rd anniversary of the passage of the United States Fair Housing Law Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968, which as amended, pronounces a national policy of fair housing for all without regard to identity under the protected class of race, color, religion, sex, national origin, disability or familial status, mandating fair housing opportunities for all citizens. Whereas the City of Pittsburgh has provided to, provided its own protections against discrimination in housing since December 16th, 1958, when Mayor David Lawrence signed the Fair Housing Practices Ordinance into effect, which as amended additionally prohibits discrimination in housing on the basis of ancestry, gender identity, gender expression, place of birth, sexual orientation, status as a victim of domestic violence, citizenship or immigration status, preferred language or hairstyle. And whereas people of all identities under every protected class are entitled to equal opportunities for the peaceful enjoyment of housing regardless of their identity, whether it is actual or perceived. Whereas illegal barriers to equal opportunity in housing, whether subtle or blatant, diminish the rights of all and violate our community's shared and deeply held values of equality and dignity for all. And whereas the Pittsburgh Commission on Human Relations enforces the Pittsburgh City Code, Chapter 659.03 prohibiting unlawful housing practices and joints with partners to raise awareness of fair housing issues and the discrimination that despite great strides forward persists. And whereas the Pittsburgh Commission on Human Relations convened the Affirmatively Furthering Fair Housing Task Force, which released 12 recommendations to the City of Pittsburgh for decreasing discrimination and increasing equity in housing. And whereas despite these efforts, discrimination in housing persists in our city and the city through its mayor, council, Commission on Human Relations, Housing Authority, Urban Redevelopment Authority and Department of City Planning still works toward achieving the recommendations of the Affirmatively Furthering Fair Housing Task Force and ending housing inequity for its citizens. And whereas National Fair Housing Month is the time to join together and recommit to the task of eradicating housing, discrimination and affirmatively furthering fair housing. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh encourages all agencies, institutions and individuals, public and private, in the City of Pittsburgh to abide by the letter and spirit of the Fair Housing Law in the pursuit of expanding opportunities and improving the quality of life for all. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh commits to make every effort to support the citizens of Pittsburgh and the departments, board, offices and authorities of the City of Pittsburgh in their fight to indiscrimination in housing and affirmatively further fair housing. And be it further resolved that the Council of this City of Pittsburgh is hereby proclaim April 2021 as Fair Housing Month in the City of Pittsburgh.
A motion or second, please.
Motion to approve.
I'm sorry, Councilwoman Gross.
Motion to approve.
There's a second.
Second.
All those in favor, send five by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who need it to prove, Councilwoman Gross, you, Councilwoman Gross, you want to talk about it?
Yes, thank you so much, Councilman. First of all, I would like to acknowledge Councilwoman Strasburger and her office's work on the proclamation and I love her consent would add her as a sponsor to the proclamation. I forgive me for that oversight. And I, I just wanted to, to extend my appreciation to everything, the Fair Housing Task Force and Affirmatively Furthering Fair Housing work that has been done in the city and the Commission on Human Relations. We know that we still have housing issues in the city around inequality, around discrimination. And I want to acknowledge the work that all of City Council has done to secure housing and really acknowledge that housing is a human right and that we are doing what we can as a body to make housing affordable and fair in the City of Pittsburgh. I don't think I can say it more eloquently than the Director Hammond, who's with us here, I, he should be here in the panel as well. Director, would you please join us to make your comments?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you so much, Councilwoman Gross. And I really, really appreciate this year's proclamation. I think that it has some, some very important parts to it. I love the fact that we are acknowledging that although the Fair Housing Act was passed in 1968, Pittsburgh had its Fair Housing ordinance in 1958. So we have a long history of commitment to fair housing in Pittsburgh, but we acknowledge that we have a long way to go and that, you know, we have attempted to, to look at the Fair Housing Task Force, the Affirmatively Furthering Fair Housing Task Force recommendations. I really appreciate that there is further commitment from the council to look at these recommendations and to see what is actionable and to support us in our move towards housing equity for the city and to end discrimination in the city. So, you know, fair housing is, the meaning of fair housing is fair, is housing free from discrimination, but I think it will go far beyond that in looking at inequities that we've lived with in this city for a long time and pressing forward in the, in the ways that we can to, to change the story and change the narrative for our city. So I just wanted to say thank you, I appreciate it so much and I appreciate the commitment that, that council makes to furthering fair housing and to acknowledging that Fair Housing Month is here and that we'll continue to work on fair housing for the, for the rest of our, our time together until, until it can be determined that we no longer need to do so, which will be quite a ways from now.
Thank you, Director. I don't believe we have any other guests, so I'll give it back to the chair, thank you. Councilwoman Strasburger, if you have anything to add?
So I appreciate this, this proclamation about fair housing. Certainly it's something we still struggle with, Pittsburgh. I will share something I'm learning and this has been, you know, I think, I've been thinking about this really at some length, I'm thinking about a lot of things recently for a variety of reasons, but given our history of institutional racism, what that really means is we need to now, every time we do a market rate development of any sort, we should think about its impact of affordable housing, knowing that if we do market rate housing in isolation in Pittsburgh, it's almost always going to be segregated, period. Not all, not, you know, almost always. And so we should build mixed income housing, not just in black communities and poor communities, but we need to do mixed income housing in every community. We will have furthered, we will have achieved this goal when there is more affordable housing in Squirrel Hill, when there's more affordable housing in Shady Side, when there's more affordable housing in South Side Flats, when there's more affordable housing, you know, on Mount Washington. We need to, we need to now think that every time there's a market rate development, what's going to be that impact of affordable housing? Not that they're bad people, but if we do a market rate development without the same time being thoughtful of creating more affordable housing, in essence, we're creating segregated communities. And we've been doing this for a hundred And we've been doing this for hundreds of years in Pittsburgh. We have been intentionally creating and living in segregated communities and pushing African-Americans to live in concentrated poverty. And now this is the moment of time that we have to be thoughtful. I'm not blaming anybody. I don't think it was intentional, not necessarily. It was intentional at some point, but not always intentional. But now that we know that fact, we should now scrutinize every single time we do a market rate development um, and, and, and see, and as I've learned from, you know, Councilwoman Strasburger and the Giant Eagle committing to Shays Bar, a- almost every development can include a minimum of ten percent affordable housing without affecting their bottom line. So we know that they can do it, they just don't want to. And so that's the charge. I'm going to charge this council. That's going to be my conversation. Every time I see any market rate development over three or four units, I'm going to ask, where is the affordability? How is this offsetting, you know, um, discrimination in housing? So, um, we have another proclamation to be read in the record, uh, um, Councilwoman Strasburger's, um, resolution.
Yes, Councilwoman Strasburger presents, whereas young adults have been drive, have been the driving force for change in the last century, bringing new ideas and high hopes to our national dialogue. Today, we remember the efforts of those who fought for their seat at the table, and we encourage coming generations to claim their place in our democracy. And now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh hereby recognizes Tuesday, April twenty-seven, two thousand and twenty-one as the Twenty-Sixth Amendment Day in the city of Pittsburgh.
Um, you've heard the resolution. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Your second? Although it's in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Prose is nay. Uh, Councilwoman Strasburger, you want to speak to this though?
Thank you, Reverend Burgess. I'll just say a few words, since, um, I didn't ask for this to be read in, in its entirety, um, given our, um, other proclamations today. But I did want to just note that within the, I hope people will take the time to read through it because it is, um, the fifty, it will be the fiftieth anniversary of the passage of the Twenty-Sixth Amendment on the twenty-seventh of this month. And we talked today, um, about how the youth of today are our leaders and are our future leaders. They're our leaders of today, and they will save us all. And, um, the fact that they are, they are engaged in the political process today, which I think is wonderful, which I didn't experience as much with my peers when I was their age. Um, I certainly was trying to be politically engaged, but I saw apathy when I was their age. And I see now, out of necessity, young people actually engaging in the process even before they can vote, and they are ready to vote when they turn eighteen, and it's so refreshing. But I, I understand it's also out of necessity. They're fighting for, um, their lives and their futures. So I wanted to, um, I wanted to honor, um, the work that doesn't always get spoken about, um, in our history, that it was a struggle for young people to get a voice, get their voices heard and, uh, have a seat at the table at a younger age. And lowering the age, the voting age to eighteen was a work of organizing significant effort. So I wanted to also recognize that it's the, um, Graduate Student Assembly at Carnegie Mellon University that brought this to my attention and asked that not only we be submitted proclamation, but has also asked the same of governor of state law. So, thank you, my colleagues, for your support.
Any other conversation? All right, and so seeing all of the conversation, uh, we will now turn it over to, um, the President. President Kel, um, Teresa Kel Smith, and we will move into, uh, public comment.
Thank you, Reverend. Thank you for sharing the mean this morning. This public comment, and I would like to remind everyone that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concerns, official action, or deliberations which are or may be before city council. Profanity and threats will not be tolerated or permitted. May we have the first speaker, please? And please, in neighborhood for the record, um, you have three minutes to speak. And, um, the Madam Clerk, can you please call the first speaker?
Sure. The first speaker is Niket Batia, followed by Jackie Smith.
Thank you. Latia? Is Latia on? I do not see, can, next speaker, Jackie Smith? Next speaker, Jackie Smith. Next speaker, Madam Clerk, please.
Next speaker is Carmine Pimpanella, followed by Ikahana Hal Makina.
Hi, this is Carmine Pimpanella, and I thank you for allowing me time to speak. I am a resident of the Morningside area. I have been asking since two thousand and nineteen for my alley to be paved. It is Swan Alley between Vil Sac and Martha. I have multiple cirrhosis. I can only get out through the back leading to the alley. It is filled with craters. They are no longer potholes. I use a scooter, and I am afraid that the scooter is going to tip over, and I'm going to break bones. I've already broken both feet at one time, just falling in the house. So I saw the new paving, but the area of Swan Alley that I live on is not included, and I am asking if that can be included.
Thank you. Was that the end of your comments?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'm sure Councilwoman will be in touch, or councilperson. May we have the next speaker, please? Ikahana Hal Makina.
Greetings. Can I be heard?
Yes, good morning.
Grand rising to you all. My title is Ikahana Hal Makina. I am the Grand Inca of the Iroquois Confederacy of Aboriginal American People. I speak with the voice of my ancestors, whose shoulders I stand upon. I speak with a voice of conviction, with the goal of penetrating the minds, the bodies, and the spirits of the people present on this call, especially those in leadership, those who have taken an oath to support, protect, and defend the Constitution. As the chief of my nation and the matriarch of the Iroquois Confederacy of Aboriginal American People, it is my duty to ensure the rights of Aboriginal American people are protected as indigenous people. We advocate for our children, to protect them now and also in the future, to ensure that they are not, they are made to feel free and whole and not alienated or exiled in their own land. Whereas the quality of life of Aboriginal American people being essential in our research and development and the implementation of sustainable technologies to ensure the survival of our prosperity. Whereas to ensure the United States uphold its government-to-government obligation to protect and secure the rights of Aboriginal indigenous people, we have the right to our lives and to live freely and to enjoy our liberties and to be safe and feel safe and secure in our own land. We have the right to speak and express freely and to be safe and not to be exposed to violence in the exercise of our rights. Whereas to ensure that international, federal, state, and local municipalities and corporate entities take measures to ensure that our rights are not violated. And when they are, it is the duty of city council to make sure that redress and remedy is fast and swift. Whereas our people shall not be forcibly assimilated. It is our right to assemble and to take care of our sacred lands, places, and spaces without interference. It is our right to express our customs, our ancestral traditions, our spirituality, without being forcibly assimilated. We are asking of you to honor these rights. We are asking for you to make provisions for these rights. Because currently, we are being forcibly assimilated into a system that we do not belong. We must choose people over profit. Justice, injustice anywhere is injustice everywhere. Justice delayed is justice denied.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Clara Weeble, followed by Shaman Pumai.
Claire and Weeble. Next speaker, Madam Clerk.
Shaman Pumai.
Grand risings in Lakesh Alaka'een. The light in me honors the light in you all. And thank you for pronouncing my name correctly, Ms. Kim Clark Baskin. I am Shaman Pumai Chakmamya Halahi, medicine woman for the Iroquois Confederacy of Aboriginal American People and Excluding Indians Not Taxed, and for all people who seek natural healing remedy and methodologies. Thirty-four years ago, on December nineteen eighty-seven, Congress in Washington, D.C., One Hundredth Congress Second Session established House Congress Resolution to Acknowledge the Contributions to the Development of the United States Constitution, reaffirming our government-to-government relationship between our peoples and the United States established in the Constitution. With that being said, to all city officials and municipal authorities, including all public and private entities and citizens whom have and continue to violate their oath and jurisdiction against the United States Constitution and excluding Indians Not Taxed, are acting under the color of law and ultra viary, which are in fact guilty of acts of genocide, forced assimilation, harassment, and theft upon our people, the Aboriginal Americans, indigenous copper-colored people, so-called Black, Negro, African-American, and et cetera, of which we are not that. Many of your municipal officers have committed local and international law, war crimes against humanity, against our people, Aboriginal American indigenous people. We have been patient and have utilized your Office of Municipal Investigations and your Citizens Police Review Board, both of which have failed to uphold their oaths to the Constitution and to your Home Rule Charter, as it reads clearly and definitively, Article One, Home Rule Powers Definition. The city of Pittsburgh has all home rule powers and may perform any function and exercise any power not denied by the Constitution, the laws of Pennsylvania, which are also bound by the Constitution of the United States of America. The powers of the city shall be construed liberally in favor of the city, not against the Constitution and Excluding Indians Not Taxed. All possible powers of the city except as limited above Article One, Section Two, Clause Three of the Constitution and Excluding Indians Not Tax are to be considered as if expressly set forth in this article. Our legislation to be presented with assistance of city council in the city of Pittsburgh in eliminating these acts of discrimination, which constitute genocide, forced assimilation, land and resources depredations, and ill-conceived policies against our people, which are in fact against constitutional and international law war crimes against humanity, against Aboriginal American people, this legislation will stand for time immemorial. We are reclaiming our place at the table of democracy, which our ancestors created and which was adopted by the United States of America, which spread around the world.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
That was the last speaker. That was the last speaker.
Okay, thank you. No further speakers. We'll move on to the, or, the next order of business, which is the presentation of papers. We'll begin with Councilwoman Burgess, Chair of Urban Recreation. Councilwoman Burgess?
I'm muted, Councilwoman.
I'm trying to get myself unmuted. Um, I, I don't, do I have papers? I can't see.
Yes.
I think I do. I think I have papers, if I remember. I'm Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Burgess.
Councilwoman Reverend Burgess presents Bill number thirteen ninety-four, Resolution Submitting the Recommendation of the Commission on Naming Public Properties to Deny the Renaming of Niagara Parklet to Oak Cliff Community Playground.
And Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Works.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Good morning, Councilman.
Good morning.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill number thirteen ninety-five, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Works For Grant Funding From the PA Department of Community and Economic Development Keystone Communities Grant Program To Provide Funding For The Construction Of A New Park Building In The Robert E. Williams Memorial Park. The Grant Proposal Includes A Request Of Five Hundred Thousand Dollars With A Total Map Of Nine Hundred Ninety-seven Thousand One Hundred And Seventy Dollars Payable From The City's Twenty Twenty and Twenty Twenty-One Capital Budget. In The Event The Grant Is Awarded, This Resolution Provides For An Agreement And Expenditures Not To Exceed One Million Four Hundred Ninety-seven Thousand One Hundred And Seventy Dollars. Bill Number fourteen oh-three, Resolution Further Amending And Supplementing Resolution Number Six Seventy-Five Of Two Thousand And Eight, Entitled Adopting And Approving The Two Thousand Nine Capital Budget And The Two Thousand Nine Through Twenty Thirteen Capital Improvement Program To Change The City Farms Deliverable From Brookline Only To Brookline And District Seven.
Motion to amend.
No. Just a new paper.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman, and thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Intergovernmental Affairs.
Madam President?
Thank you, Councilwoman. Good morning.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill number thirteen ninety-six, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision To The City Of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan For One Twenty-Nine McLean Street Commercial Property At One Twenty-Nine McLean Street.
Thank you. Councilman Kraus, Chair of Human Resources.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you. Good morning, Councilman.
Good morning, Madam President.
Councilman Lavelle, Chair of Finance and Law.
Madam President.
Thank you. Good morning, Councilman.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill number thirteen ninety-seven, Resolution Authorizing The Mayor And The City Solicitor To Enter Into A Professional Services Agreement With David Wright For An Expert Witness Services Related To Pending Civil Rights Litigation In The U.S. District Court In An Amount Not To Exceed Ten Thousand Dollars.
Thank you. And Councilman O'Connor, Chair of Public Safety Services. Is he here today?
I, I am. No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, and congratulations, Councilman.
Thank you, thank you. I, I would say, um, just that, thank you to the staff and everybody for their support. Um, I would say, uh, Reverend Kraus did a very good job with the ceremony. Somehow, we didn't laugh the whole time, but we got through it, so, uh, thank you, guys, and thank you, Madam President.
You're welcome. And Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Strasburger presents Bill number thirteen ninety-eight, Resolution Authorizing The Mayor And Director Of The Department Of Public Safety To Enter Into A Contract With Informant Design Inc. And/or Homeless Children's Education Fund To Provide For The Continued Operation Of The Bit, Bitburg Online Application And Providing For The Payment Of The Costs Not To Exceed Seventy-Five Thousand Dollars.
And Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use And Economic Development.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. Good morning.
Good morning.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill number thirteen ninety-nine, Resolution Providing For An Agreement With The Urban League Of Pittsburgh For The Implementation Administration Of The Housing Counseling Program And Related Costs In An Amount Not To Exceed One Hundred Thousand Dollars.
Thank you. And myself, Chair of Hearings, I have no new papers. Uh, we will now move on to unfinished business. Is there any further unfinished business? Or any unfinished business before council? Seeing none, now we move on to the next order of business, which is reports to committee for final action. Councilman Lavelle, Committee on Finance and Law.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill number thirteen ninety, reported to the Committee on Finance and Law for April fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number thirteen fifty-one, Resolution Amending Resolution Three Forty-three Of Two Thousand And Twenty, Which Authorizes The Fair- which authorized the mayor and the city solicitor to enter into a professional services agreement with Campbell Durant for professional legal services and expert advice regarding labor matters by increasing the total spend by fifty thousand dollars for a new not-to-exceed amount of three hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Bill Number thirteen seventy, Resolution Amending Resolution Number five sixty-five, entitled Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Directors of the Department of Finance and Public Works to Execute an Agreement of Sale and All Related Documents Necessary to Effect the Purchase by the City of Fifty-One Sixty-Four Broad Street in the Tenth Ward and to Accept a Deed for the Property and Further Authorizing the Expenditures of Funds for the Purchase, Closing, and Other Associated Auxiliary Costs not to exceed ten thousand dollars, and Further Authorizing Acceptance of That Lot and Dedicating That Lot and an Adjacent City Own Lot Together as the Nelson Mandela Peace Park to Clarify the Cost of the Purchasing Said Property and Other Associated Auxiliary Costs. Bill Number thirteen seventy-three, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor, the Manager of the Office of Community Health and Safety, and the Director of the Department of Public Safety to Enter Into an Agreement with Primary Care and MEE Productions for the Purpose of Mini Grants for the Community-Based Organization and Trusted Community-Identified Leaders to Participate in the Allegheny County Health Department and Department of Human Services COVID-nineteen Awareness Campaign for Ethnic and Minority Communities in an Amount Not to Exceed one hundred thousand dollars, chargeable to and payable from the Stop the Violence Trust Fund.
You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the name is called, those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill. Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
Thank you. The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes to finally pass. Then moves us on to Councilman Anthony Coghill, Committee on Public Works. Thank you, Councilman.
Sure.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number thirteen ninety-one, Reported the Committee on Public Works for April fourteenth, twenty-twenty-one, with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill Number thirteen sixty-five, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to Execute Relevant Agreements to Receive Grant Funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development's Multi-Module Transportation Program for the Design and Construction of Street and Sidewalk Infrastructure and Pedestrian Plaza Space at and near the Intersection of Beechview Avenue and Broadway Avenue, and Further Providing for an Agreement and Expenditures Not to Exceed six hundred thousand dollars. Bill Number thirteen sixty-six, Resolution Further Amending and Supplementing Resolution Number eight thirty of twenty eighteen, Previously amended by Resolution One Forty-two of twenty-twenty, entitled Resolution Providing for an Agreement and/or Use of Existing Agreements, allowing the mayor and the director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the city to enter into an Agreement to Complete Engineering Design for a New Multi-Module Connection of Hazelwood, Greenfield, and Four Mile Run with Oakland, which will Support Green Infrastructure, Ensure Safe Travel, Increase Travel Options Between These Neighborhoods, Protect Local Neighborhoods, and Increase Connectivity Consistent with the Concept Design Developed Through the Twenty-Eighteen Public Process, and Further Providing for Payment of the Cost Not to Exceed one million, three hundred forty-six thousand, six hundred and forty-four dollars and ten cents to Authorize a Supplemental Agreement with Michael Baker for an Increase to the Scope of Work on the Mon Oakland Mobility Corridor Project and to Account for the New Increase Project Cost Not to Exceed two million, thirty-one thousand, nine hundred and four dollars and eighty-one cents, an Increase of three hundred ninety-six thousand, two hundred and twenty-three dollars and thirty-one cents from the Previous Supplement.
You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are now ready for final action. Those in favor of the passage of the name is called, those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes or finally passed. Councilman Bruce Kraus, Committee on Human Resources.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
Councilman Kraus presents Bill Number thirteen ninety-two, Reported the Committee on Human Resources for April fourteenth, twenty-twenty-one, with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill Number thirteen eighty-two, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Human Resources and Civil Service to Enter Into an amended lease agreement with Wood Street Commons Commercial LLC to Continue Leasing Office Space in Three-O-Four Wood Street for the Pittsburgh Partnership for a Psalm Not to Exceed one million, three hundred fifty-nine thousand, six hundred fifty-four dollars and eighty-two cents over five years and for the Payment of the Cost There.
You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are now ready for final pass... final action. All in favor of the passage of the name is called, those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
Thank you. The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes or finally passed. And it moves us on to our final committee of the day. It's Councilman Bobby Wilson, Committee on Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number thirteen ninety-three, Reported the Committee on Land Use and Economic Development for April fourteenth, twenty-twenty-one, with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill Number twelve thirty-one, Resolution Approving a Conditional Use Application under the Pittsburgh Code Title Nine, Zone in Article Five, Chapter Nine-Eleven, Section Nine-Eleven-O-Four-A-Four-One to Lukovich Center, Inc., property owner, for the Authorization to Operate a Multi-Suite Residential Limited Use at twenty-one forty-two Wright Me Street, block and lot eighty-seven B fifty-eight Zone RMM Multi-Unit Residential Mark... Moderate Density District, Fourteenth Ward, Council District Number Five.
You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the name is called, those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
I'm sorry, Kim's computer had a problem, so can you wait one second? Okay.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
President Kelsmith.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes or finally passed. Thank you, Madam Clark. That moves us on to motions and resolutions. I'll start with the meeting announcement. Tomorrow, Wednesday, April twenty-first, council will meet for the Standing Committee's meeting at ten AM, chaired by Councilman Lavelle. Also tomorrow, at one-thirty PM, council will hold a cablecast public hearing on Bill Ten Eighty-five as it relates to amending the zoning code to require rear or side access to off-street parking spaces for single-family attached dwellings. To register to speak, please fill out the signup form on the council meeting's webpage by nine AM tomorrow morning for the council meeting and by nine... by eleven-thirty AM tomorrow morning for the public hearing. You may also register by calling the city clerk's office at four-one-two-two-five-five-two-one-three-eight by the registration deadlines. Is there anything from members?
Madam President, if I may?
Yes. Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you. I just wanted to acknowledge Councilman Burgess's comments about ten percent affordable housing by... required for large luxury developments. And I just wanted to be sure that we acknowledge the good people of Lawrenceville, who championed the first pilot project in the City of Pittsburgh for the mandatory inclusionary zoning at ten percent and the many dozens now of units that have been constructed in Lawrenceville because of that zoning change, the inclusionary zoning overlay that will be in front of council to vote in permanently sometime this summer. And I want to acknowledge that those... that even that pilot project would not have happened without many years of advocacy among the neighbors, neighborhood groups. So many meetings, so well attended, with so much community input and the leadership that happened there. So, I just didn't want to negate all of that effort, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other members?
Um...
Councilman Burgess?
Thank you. I want to certainly thank Councilwoman Gross and all of her efforts. Um, and I want to make it very clear that the only reason that I have not tried to expand that pilot program is that I have been cautioned by the Law Department that if I was to try to do that citywide without the data that they've been able to collect in Lawrenceville, it would probably be struck down and may defeat our efforts in Lawrenceville. And that's why I have not attempted, at this point, to make that a citywide initiative, although I believe it should be and would do that, would vote for it tomorrow, would advocate for it tomorrow, and introduce it tomorrow, if possible. I... I'm actually now speaking to those who may be watching us, you know? I am... We're at a unique moment of history. And I am prayerful for peace in our country. I have not watched the Derek Chauvin trial. I could not watch it. I can't watch it. I can't spend my day in tears all day long. Every time I watch it, I cannot help but cry, and I can't stop crying. If I even think about it long, I'll start crying. George Floyd, that whole idea that we don't... that we're now in suspense, right? We... we don't know. We saw a murder with our own eyes. And now, we have to wait to see after we saw the lynching. We saw it in our face. But now, we have to wait to see if our justice system believes that a black man's life is worth anything. And I pray, regardless of the verdict, and I'm very... I'm very fearful, very fearful of what... what may happen after the trial is over. I'm very fearful. I'm very prayerful. We... when people say we must come together... We must come together. We must come together with a reality that we have to change. Not a reality... it's not enough that I spent my life in church. And I think we need to have prayer service, yes. And we need to have interfaith services, yes. I do those things. But it's not enough. We have to change this country. It is a racist country. We have to change our city. We have been... we have allowed racism in our city to... to bubble and foster and to prevail, and it must change. And the only way we can change... I've dedicated my life on counsel to this, and hopefully, you know, some of the words we've said have found its way into the larger city context. I started talking about a city for all, and now it's a language everyone uses. I started talking about the tell of two cities, and now everyone uses it. And hopefully, Black Pittsburgh Matters will be the next word choices I use, another one that other people will pick up. The goal now is how do we... how do we invest in black people in black communities? How do we do it? How do we disproportionately invest in to take resources from other things and to invest specifically, deliberately, intentionally over the next fifty or a hundred years into black people in black communities? That is... that's simple. It's not anything other than that. There is not... it's not legislation. Although legislation alone, it was great. It's not coming together. That's great. It's now time to put up or shut up. I have worked with this mayor to put money into black communities, proud of that. But it's not going to be enough. We're going to have to do this, and this uncomfortable process is... This is the moment of our life, right? This uncomfortable process of investing in black people and black communities disproportionately is the only solution. It is it. Everything else we talk about, unless we do that, we're not sincere. Everything else will be helpful. It'll feel good, but it won't change. The status quo, every day, every day, every day, every day, this country is profiting because of its historic racist practices that have isolated black people, have put them in ghettos, have redlined them, have discriminated against them over and over and over again. And now it's time... some people call it reparations. I call it justice. It is time for us now to look at our city, our state, our county, our federal governments, and take the dollars that have been stolen from these communities and these people historically. We've done a great job. Our police has been reformed, and we have... we have a great police force in many ways. Unfortunately, the nature of policing, it is not... We've went through, you know, the national initiatives. We've done... we have shots fired. We've done everything we can. Except the nature of policing is an... has an issue, right? It has a history, the nature of policing. We're going to have to change... When we were imagining police, that means we're going to have to have less officers, hopefully maybe even paid more, but less officers. We have to change the whole nature of the way we view policing, right? And the way we view black communities, and the way to make us safe. And I'll say this, I've said this many years. I'll say it again. The snow globe example. If we could take all of Pittsburgh, all people, and put them in a snow globe, every house, every family, shake it up and turn it over so that black people, poor people, were equally dispersed throughout every neighborhood in the City of Pittsburgh, we would have very little crime and violence. It's the concentration because of our racist past. It is the consecration of black people and the concentration of poverty that is the core of the violence that we face. Therefore, and the crime that we face, therefore, the reaction to that crime and violence has been this militarization of the police force. And so, to keep the white suburbans feeling safe, and then, or those maybe even suburbs, those white, completely white residential areas. And then you have this divide, this track, you know, across the track divide. And all of that is history of our country. I'm afraid, but hopeful. I'm like Obama, right? For the first time, I saw young black people. I've been saying this all of my life. And this summer, last summer, I saw black people, young black people, and my kids age, and they don't see, you know, my kids didn't grow up. They don't see the... they don't... they didn't have to deal with the utter racism, explicit racism I had to deal with in my life. They did not have to see that as much. I have hope, but I'm prayerful. I'm just... I'm very... I guess I'm all over the place, but this trial has absolutely knocked me to my has absolutely knocked me to my knees. I can't watch it. I pray for the verdict. I pray for peace. I pray that we do not go crazy regardless of that, that we, that whoever, whatever side thinks they're victorious doesn't go crazy. But my, over and over again, my plea to council, and especially as we now start to look at, we'll talk tomorrow about the stimulus dollars. It is the reallocation of dollars to black people and black communities that will be, that simply will be what equity is about. And we'll see if we're up to the task. We'll see if our city, our country, our state, our county is up to the task of being equitable. I don't know. I hope that we are, pray that we are. So I pray for peace in our city and our country, but I am, I am, I am afraid. Although I believe the future is bright, right? We're, we're seeing the last gasp of racism, which you're really seeing. We're going to become a more diverse country by, just by birth. And you're seeing now the last gasp of white racism as we're starting to dismantle it. You're seeing it raises ugly head with Trump and Trumpian philosophies to make its last and, and its last death stand. We just see how much damage it can do while, while briefs fire and rises one last tragic time. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend. Any other members? Seeing none, can we have a motion to excuse any, we don't have any absent members, a motion to approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting?
A move.
Back to the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned. Thank you, everyone.